Well, we did actually did do it well, but it's kind of.
Well, I thought I saw thirty thousand dollars.
Nineteen twenty-six or something was one of the last one nineteen more of the last.
Twenty-eight, but then it cost us.
Okay, we're live.
Just. Okay, so we should have just maybe just grabbed them.
Well, no, it just it just went way up.
My time to actually buy would be different.
A lot of energy in the room. We're back at the sun shining and all, though it's still cold. But we'd like to start off by everyone removing their caps and seeing what the Rachel's gonna eat us in four hours.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we are opening the select board meeting for March thirtieth. It is five oh two. Okay, and I need a motion to start us off by sending the order.
So moved.
Do you have a second? All those in favor? As they go around, is everyone looking at March sixteenth and would like to make motion on that?
I would move that we accept the minutes from March sixteenth.
Would that be as written, or would you like?
As written. I don't see any errors, however, someone else might.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Yes, you did. All those in favor? We have some brief and exciting old business regarding broadband here in Lubeck. You like to, Rachel, make any comments very on that?
Uh, well, I can make some comments, but I really think someone from the committee should, such as Martha Howell.
You could put on the spot.
Yikes. I had to come up here where the camera can see me?
Yeah, you could actually sit in that chair right there if you like, if you'd rather sit.
The hosi, okay.
Jason's got it wired up over there, so.
Well, the Economic Development Committee has been looking at bringing fiber network broadband to Lubeck. Rachel's been looking at it for years.
Years.
Years, and we now have a group of us together that everything seems to be coming together. Thanks to lots of government money out there looking for a home and lots of interest in broadband. We're thinking that the recent COVID issues of people having figuring out that they have to work from home and kids have to go to school from home and so forth has really brought it to the fore. We've done a couple of things. We've had an R put out a request for proposals. We got three where we got three documents back, only one of which really talked directly to our request. And that was, I don't know whether you want to read the, do you want to put the proposal into the TRP into the minutes?
We had them last.
You had last, okay.
Last time they were all in.
So the RFP was looking for a company that would put fiber optics throughout the public ways in Lubeck that would work with the town to own the infrastructure and would work with Howard Small and his company that owns the box in our closet here that goes across to Campabella. The one that came back and did all of that for us and and more is Acxiom. And so the the committee strongly urges the board to approve that we go forward with Acxiom. Their their proposal, it has been submitted to you. It's not it's not a hard and fast contract yet by any means. We want to move forward with them, however. And the second thing that we were looking for, we're setting up a working committee. I don't know whether that needs your approval, but we want to set up a working committee within the Economic Development Committee to really focus on broadband and get this going. The time span that we're looking for now is something like a two-year build out with Acxiom. So, you know, it's not, you aren't going to get a hundred over a hundred bits per second next week, but hopefully you will within the next two to three years.
And the ad, members of the ad hoc committee will also be doing legwork. Is that, I mean, that'll be going.
The working committee is going to be setting up, we're, we hope to in the very near future, work with the Sunrise Economic Council to put together a an up-to-date survey. We know everybody out there already did a survey some years ago, but we need one that's current with current people in town. We need to know what kind of service they have now, what kinds of things they use the internet for. And we need to start getting the word out as to what fiber optics can do for them beyond and better than what they have now. So we want to have informational meetings. We're going to build brochures. We're going to do posters. Hold any number of informational meetings with different interest groups within town so that we keep our town informed every step of the way. If we've learned nothing else in all the work we've done, it's the importance of bringing the town along with us.
Yes. The other thing I wanted to say that was appealing about the Acxiom is that his proposal included tax neutral.
Absolutely.
That was, that was very appealing for us.
Absolutely. The build out would happen, yes, we'd have to come to the board and the town to get upfront money when we're doing the build out, but as we build out, it will be supported by the subscribers. Part of our job is to work at getting more people to sign on there, but as that happens, and they they did a fairly conservative estimate that they've seen work in other towns, the subscriptions pay for the service and will pay for the payments on the bond that we would get. So therefore, over a twenty-year bond, there would be no cost for taxpayers. It will be paid for by the subscriber.
And eventually become a source of revenue.
Absolutely. Once that bond is paid, it's ours.
Good.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Martha.
So certainly out there in TV land, some energetic broadband, high speed, however you want to phrase it, want to get involved and get this happening, the door has now been opened. And we please ask you that you come in and help and assist in any way you can so we can get this going. It's a long time coming. So thank you, committee.
Truly.
For all your work, I know you're just ringing the bell. You're just getting started.
And lots of meetings.
Yeah, lots of meetings, but any or all help, if you're out there and would like to do that, please do so.
Need a motion.
So we need then a motion to, again, not any financial commitments of any sort at this point, to a motion to accept Acxiom.
I I move that we accept Acxiom's proposal that are presented to us. That is my rule second.
And all those in favor? Oh, I just feel like we've moved this step closer already. Don't get old. All right. Well, thank you again for that. That's fantastic. Old yet new business, segueing to new business.
Do you want to do the bandstand in old business because it is really old?
Oh, yeah.
It's got mold on it.
Yeah, yes, yes. Before we go to new, let's, we got mold and termites and everything on this old business. But we have an honored guest who would like to speak about our our bond bandstand, which we have had several attempts in trying to repair and upgrade and be able to hold a person and a burger at the same time. So Kurt, if you would like to come up and speak to us about your. You're welcome.
So, yeah, I've read, I've been reading about this in the newspaper and I'm sad and and there's other people around who really feel strongly about keeping this structure in the town. And I certainly would like to see it. Williams plans on using it this year for one of our events. And I understand that it's the sixty-fifth anniversary of the Orange River Jazz Band and they really would like to have them perform in the gazebo.
Oh, lovely.
So on the Fourth of July. So the plan is, my plan is, to do this in three phases. And I think Renee said something about like the sort of like the same ideas that were put forth by the other people, like different, different sections of the gazebo done at a time. So phase one is, I think, I think this all falls within the sort of parameters of what you want to done to the to the gazebo or the bandstand. So what I would do at first is just remove the deck, remove the brush, landscaping fabric, spread stone, replace the rotting members and replace the deck. And then at some point in the future, hopefully late summer or or fall, depending on how busy I am and anybody that would help me, we would get that done, but.
Kurt, can I ask you a question? Do you have an electrician helping you?
No, this somebody, you would, you guys would have to hire somebody to do something about the power. But the last time my band played there, there was nothing wrong with the power.
I just want to make sure it's okay and it's up to date because almost everybody uses it.
It might need like a GFCI or something, but I don't think it needs.
Okay.
I don't, I think it's operational.
Okay.
I know there was problem, there are problems with the electricity on Water Streets from maybe landmarks up towards Eric's in that direction. I don't think any of the electricity on the on the poles works past a certain point, but I don't think that affects, I don't think that affects that.
Okay.
Maybe we can run an extension cord from that down to Water Street.
If Marathon ever comes back and we need power down there.
That's right.
So I I'm I'm doing this out of the sort of out of the goodness of my, I'm offering to do this out of the goodness of my heart, but I also, I would like some sort of compensation if possible, either either donation to lamps or from for the work that I put in or just, you know, be paid for it so that I can make a donation to lamps, however it would work out.
Do you have a figure in mind?
I don't have a figure in mind because I figured you folks have a figure in mind and and I figure we can, I figure we can work with those figures.
Well, we can if there's anything more than one, like that, that was a month.
Right?
For materials and labor? Because the materials just for phase one are going to be twenty-one hundred dollars.
Oh, yeah, there's no doubt about it.
Twenty-two hundred dollars.
I thought you were talking about paying him.
I think we're in the good because we have put this out so many times and we haven't received any bids. So I think, yeah, I think we're in the good.
Something you want to check on?
No, I think that's pretty clear. We put it out for public bid. Four times.
Four.
We did receive one, but.
So if it's a budget issue, we could put off the different phases of it until there is money on the budget.
That's good to know, though, because no one needs a carrying beam.
Yeah, so you've looked underneath there. You know what, you know what it looks like.
I built it.
You built it, okay. So I know, I see that those four, the four lamp beams that are sort of laminated together need to be replaced. And so what I would do, just very, very quickly about what I would do, I would slightly jack, jack up the the structure so I can get the, so I can get the beam out and I would replace, replace the beam, replace any other rotting members around that and then replace the deck. The deck is two by six. It's a very thick deck, so it's not as cheap as it would be to do five quarter by six. But I think building it up in order to do that would probably be more trouble than it's worth. So, yeah, so I would do it in, we try to do it in three phases, but that's a rough estimate because somebody probably know I'm, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to make an investment downtown. And if I do that, my time to do this and that and everything's going to get a lot less. So that's why I proposed that to do it in phases through through to next year. But, yeah, eventually we'll, we'll take off the skirting, repair the trim and then take the structure and put a roof on the structure. The roof's about to croak, but I think it would last. It would be good enough for one more to, we could probably squeeze another year out of it before it needs to be replaced. Yes.
With the, because the trim looks like it's really custom and I know that this was built to replicate. Replicate the the old bandstand that was there. So would you make the trim?
I don't have, I don't have the knives, I don't have the knives to cut the trim, so somebody, somebody, Jason, do you know where the knives are?
No, there was actually, it was nothing, it was, it was nothing special. It was, it was all cedar. We got it all from the mill and, and we were back it.
Okay.
So, I mean, that was thirty years ago. There was no special trim on it at all.
So we could, we could just, we could just pick a, pick a different kind of crown molding or whatever and just then replace it.
That's something that was added by the masons around the roof.
Yeah, so I would just source some, some similar looking trim from from the lumberyard.
And skirting.
And the skirting, my, my idea for the skirting is it's kind of rotten at the bottom, but I think that like the, where the posts are, I think it's kind of just aphasia. Jason probably knows better than I do. So my idea was to replace those post coverings like with new material, but I'll probably just cut, I'll probably just take apart the skirting and rip down the bottom piece to a shorter, to a shorter, so that it's not so thick and so that it's up off of the ground so that it's not just rotting right away again. So when I repair that, when I, what's that?
And put them back on.
And put them back on. And when I repair that, when it's repaired, it'll be off, it'll be off of the stone, you know, but probably about that much.
Before we go too much further, Susan and I were talking about the workers' comp level of this, where you're not technically a committee. Can we perhaps have the board create a bandstand repair committee and put your people on it?
I think I have, I've, I've taken the oath to be on the, on the, on the celebration committee, so I don't know if it could.
Oh, the celebration committee?
It was years ago.
Yeah.
Well, it's going to be done every year.
Right. I haven't been, I haven't taken it yet since.
Well, just a succession so that it would, you'd follow under the town insurance.
What, okay, but what if I, what if I needed another worker? Like, there's going to be days where.
You ball break.
That's a name and put them on it.
Because if you're a volunteer for the town and you're doing something and you hurt yourself, you fall in our work.
And that actually would fall over on this, we could have it carry over to the, let's make it Parks Repair Committee.
Yeah, that would cover Stockton as well.
Whatever you guys want to call it.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a good.
Yeah, and I think everybody agrees that like having live performances downtown is an asset for the community.
Absolutely.
And, and one thing I wanted to suggest, and I know this wasn't popular with Wanda Matthews because she wants to see the gazebo there and so do I, but another option could be demolishing the structure and putting in a concrete pad and and a metal roof pavilion there instead, which would be more multi-use. You could have music there. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent for this idea, but I think it might actually be less expensive. And it could be used for family parties, music.
I'm with Wanda.
Okay. It could be, it could be a more multi-use structure.
It's also an invitation for a lot of tomfoolery.
Sure.
See, we tore down.
And it looks good. I mean, when people come downstairs and they see that, they're like, oh, what a cute little dance team, so.
We tore down what was left of the original and we built this out of a picture that they had at the old English railers and all that stuff. It's, it's really nothing fancy.
Yeah.
And I mean, at the time, the cost, they're evolving one on, I think, twenty-eight hundred dollars.
To do the whole thing.
That was materials and labor, so things have changed.
Yeah, as you can see, this is just, this is just materials for the first party. I mean, it's kind of.
So I guess do we need a motion to make a parks committee? Okay, so I'll make a motion that we establish a parks committee for oversight on the structures in the parks. Stockford and, what is that park called?
Park Repair Committee, maybe?
What is that park?
Park Maintenance.
Park Maintenance.
I don't know. Does that park have a name?
Does have a name, doesn't it?
Bandstand. That's, that's just.
It's not a park. It's probably just a.
Park.
Cover under parks.
Park slash bandstand.
So twenty-hundred dollars would be, or then a good thing to do because I'm also repair, I'm also, as, as a, as a gift, I'm repairing floor on, on the, the stage, so I suppose it would be good.
So you're volunteering for this committee, you know?
I'm volunteering, I'm already doing something.
So we'll get some appointment papers for that one.
So you're, you're the asterisk on the committee list.
Well, you know, appointment papers.
Congratulations.
I'll add that to your motion.
Right there, yeah.
Anybody else you want us to put on the motion?
I think I have two or three people who will help, will help.
Park slash bandstand repair committee.
So.
Maintenance.
Mostly with the beam, it's, it's a matter of having two or three people to help me put the beam in place, so.
Who'd you get the price from?
These are from like the.
We have, while we're, before we forget, the second on this committee, all those in favor?
Because I can help you.
And then I'm wondering, can we approve like expenditure up to like five thousand dollars at this point for that committee, which should take you through this and maybe through part of the late summer stuff and then you.
So we can just address the next.
But how do you want to word through that?
Do we want to wait for an RLF meeting and then bring it back?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, because we're thinking the RLF.
Though it was only twenty-eight hundred back then and RLF still exists, so that might be a discussion.
We'll put an old business on the next meeting to get in the meeting.
So we can, who's that on that?
Reach out to the masons.
They said they would help.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did say they would, so.
Did they define that help?
No, I did not define it, but they did say they would help, so. And they might have some bodies that.
Yeah, I'm thinking of skills.
So if, if broadband.
I would love it if somebody else would do the trimming because I'm not a trim carpenter.
You know, I'm thinking of, and I can't remember, I can't believe I can't remember his name, Walter? Is it Walter?
Spear?
Down, down, right X to the bridge.
Yeah, Walter Spear.
Walter Spear. Walter Spear's a master carpenter. He has retired, given a lot of his work to Eric Tigger in Machias. So one of those two people, you could ask.
And apparently, without any undue pressure of being intelligent.
And that's right. Now, now that they've been seen by the far and wide general public, yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to say, so broadband is not your expertise, but you still have an inkling to help out. There's yet another group that you can join.
That's right, that's right.
It's a different kind of band. It's not broadband.
The band tonight, tonight.
Just grab your baton and get to work.
That's right. So, is that ready?
Thank you very much.
Sounds like a fair amount of support.
Great.
Thank you very much.
I'm like the bandstand.
And the one, now, we're going to head to some new business and thank you, Gail, for your patience. We're going to get you in a second. Roadside cleanup?
Yes, I was emailed by resident Deb Seavey. She was asking about the, the spring cleanup. She was thinking about extending it like multiple weekends. So cleanup's a nine to eleven for five weekends starting April twenty-third. Folks will be cleaning along, along sections from the town line to Flatiron Arc, not Forge Iron. So I guess that's starting April twenty-third and the following five weekends being townwide roadside cleanup. And we'll ask NOSO to bring a dumpster or is that a?
Yeah.
You just plan, okay.
As usual, they can down to my yard, they can use those still.
Okay, great.
I think we used to do it on one weekend, it's like a big.
Along, yeah, stretch it out a little bit. And I mean, our public works has helped as well. They'll, and I don't know if so, we'll see bags on the side of the road and they'll just stop and grab them up. If they can't make it up to a dumpster, just put it in the bag. There will be, there's bags available. And she says that there's some going to be donated. And they're going to be sorting out the recyclables and returnables.
Good, good.
Yeah, so April twenty-third.
Update on our.
Yep.
Website, Facebook.
Kudos to Deb Seavey. This is like her third year.
All that stuff. Clean Lubeck.
I've seen a lot of people along the sides of the roads already picking up stuff. And it's very nice to see.
Oh, she, she also mentioned that she's going to speak to the women's club and the library and other organizations in town to get the word out and get volunteers out there. And we have a lot of organizations.
We usually have four or five big cleaners.
I will say, though, after a hard day of broadband and working on the band shell and maybe cleaning up trash, we need a place where you might have a thirst.
Would that be where Gail White?
Oh, segue. Oh, my God.
So if I may, we, Gail White has joined us, who owns the Lubeck Brewing Company.
Yes.
Regarding his license. We have his.
Application.
All the paperwork and application on the back, and I think, I believe, I was discussing with you. I, I see seats and chairs inside, so we're.
Yes, so this, actually, it's a, so I'm still operating with a brewer's permit and I want to expand my seating into where the restaurant space was. So, you know, with the pandemic, we had closed everything indoors, moved outside. The outdoor beer garden has been such a hit.
Oh, my God, yes.
Yeah.
In a freaking snowstorm there down there drinking.
So I want to give them inside space, but the, the tasting room itself is too small to safely have, there's no ventilation.
Yeah.
So we've put the French doors in to, and then allow people to pass through what's now the tasting room to get outside.
Nice, nice.
So it's really, it's just expand the seating and allow us to have indoor seating.
And I will say, I drove by one time in below zero and there were people out there. I hope they all got a little coupon for a free beer above sixty degrees because shamefully, I did not get out of the car, but I wanted to.
And the bank didn't give me a break in my mortgage, so they didn't really have to pay full price.
So a simple motion to accept.
I move that we accept Mr. White's application here.
I will second that. Here we go. All those in favor?
Phenomenal job.
Hands are up. Thank you, Gail. Pick up paperwork tomorrow morning?
Perfect, yep. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you have specific hours that you're changing or doing this summer?
Eleven to five, we're going to continue. And then starting this week, we're open Saturday and Sunday. And then before Memorial Day, we'll go to four days, Thursday, Sunday.
That's wonderful.
Soon as the one permits, we'll get to it.
Yes, yes. That's always been a frustration for people that, that places are not coordinating when they're open and shut.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
Say hello to the beginning lady.
Yes. Plus join and then quit. Thank you, Sima.
Just Pat.
I have to do it in blue?
Oh, yeah. All right. Well, sort of working in the opposite direction, we have a comprehensive plan committee resignation.
Oh, we're not speaking of broadband.
Yes.
Yep, Patricia Van Rollins is not able to serve on the committee. But Georgina Brown Delmicky is, and she's here in the audience.
Well.
Yes.
She actually attended the meeting we had the other night and, but this is her formal appointment.
Next to the meeting, and still wants to?
Yes.
I don't know, she doesn't look very happy.
That's left over from her, her work on the border. It was like the, the rule was never smile.
Thank you, Tina. Yeah. Motion.
Motion to.
Motion to accept.
Accept.
Both resignation and appointment.
Both resignation and appointment to the cover as a plan.
I accept.
Yes.
You sure she was going with us?
And we're all in favor.
We're all in favor. Thank you very much. Do you want to, next we have semi, we're going to put an ad out.
Yes.
That's exciting. What's the ad going to say?
Cemetery and Park Mowing, the big question in our budget committee meetings, you, you had talked about making sure everybody was at fifteen dollars per hour. So I just wanted a vote on that, so I, I've got the ad ready to go and.
Motion to move Cemetery and Mowing to the fifteen dollars an hour?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
And I'll point out, I have one other employee that is below fifteen dollars now.
I was going to.
Yeah. Right, and do you want to keep it like, do you want to go retro?
Would you?
I was, I was thinking we could go retro to the last set of races that we did not bad long ago when we neglected to put her in everybody else.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Oh, sorry, is that? All those in favor?
Like this, would you?
All right, we've done that. All right, we've done that. Okay, we have one downer in the meeting we're gonna get to today. And I believe Rachel several minutes ago regarded it as tomfoolery.
Tomfoolery, yes.
The town of Lubeck, and if you haven't read on Facebook, it's become a short novel, has had some street sign issues. First, I'd like to emphasize for anybody who's just kinda going, eh, you know, that's a kid's court. So fool. It is obligated by the state and by the town that these signs are up for 911 for emergency vehicles. So we're talking police, fire, ambulance. We certainly all know that every second counts. And to not necessarily know exactly where you are, and in this town, that's very easy, to stress how important these signs are and how important this issue is that it has been happening. So in regards to that, we'd like to discuss what we are attempting to do.
I've been in communication with the Washington County Sheriff's Department, and there is a detective that's working on the case. I asked him if he thought it would be a good idea to put it to the media, and we did that this morning on the radio. I've also contacted a TV source, I'm waiting to hear back. But, and he was all in favor of offering a reward. So like, further permission and authorization to offer a five hundred dollar reward. And in fact, there have been some donations that, according to social media, have been submitted to the town, and we're gonna be using that as well. So five hundred dollar reward for any information that leads to the conviction and arrest of the.
Maybe earn one.
I will make that a motion.
And second.
All those in favor? So again, the significance, if, not only the expense of the signs, which is tallying as we speak, which is not tens and twenties, we're talking now into the thousands. And then that's not including, they all have to get put back. So we're, our wonderful highway crew, which is, I'm sure got better things to do, but we would have to use their time as well, or your time as well, that's theirs, to get these not only signs put up or posts where necessary. So any, which way we can stress the importance of having this cease and desist and hopefully nobody gets hurt. Not only trying to take them, but nobody gets hurt in lieu of having directions for 911 available. And folks, that's, that's taxpayer money. That's your money.
How much taxpayer money is it? Do you have an estimate what the cost is?
It's about seventeen hundred fifty-three dollars plus.
About.
And that doesn't include the manpower labor of installing them. So that's why, that's just for the signs.
How much is that?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, sorry. I've heard reports that this is the second incident.
This is actually, well, if you count this incident as two, because it happened over two nights, there was an incident in August where six had to be replaced.
As somebody said before, should these little malfunctions be caught, we would have an instant cemetery lawn mowing service.
There could be, in lieu of, there could be some services rendered maybe down the lines. Or, or another idea might be return them.
Hmm, yes.
Maybe just not knowing how important these are.
Yes.
That would be a nice transition as well.
We gotta get that letter of support.
Ah, okay, okay, so we done bringing this whole party down?
Yes.
Back out of positive now.
Okay, another, we do need a approval for Sunrise Council, Sunrise County Economic Council.
Sunrise Economic Council.
Yeah, you said that.
Letter of support.
Letter of support. Uh, this is to, oh, Rebecca do Carol's thing? This letter is to express support for the Sunrise County Economic Council's application for the Community Resilience Partnership Service Provider Grant Program. The town of Lubeck is exploring options related to community resilience and assistance from S C E C would be greatly appreciated. Lubeck is researching or working on a few resilient-related initiatives, including increasing broadband access, wastewater treatment facility, a shoreline erosion protection program. And given our small staff and limited resources, having S C E C available to provide support could truly increase our capacity to make a difference sincerely.
Well, so authorize.
So I'll make a motion that we authorize Renee to send the letter supporting the resilience person.
A little tricky there.
S C E C, yes.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
There will be a resolution eventually that will come down that you guys will have to do. I emailed that to you guys from Lubeck over.
Is that the resilience?
No, yeah, not right now. This is what she needed by Monday, so.
All right. Let's do any committee updates?
Shellfish met last month. New members will be joining Mondays, the meeting for this month. So we'll elect the president or chair and all that stuff.
The deputy warden is at the training, I think every speech she.
The thirtieth, that's correct, the thirtieth. She's taking that, yep, she's taking a test to that. Yeah.
Apparently our. We'll have two wardens that can do some of this.
Apparently RLF will have something to do and meet about regarding the bandstand.
Yes, yes, yes.
And we did have an application taken out, so there is some activity there. Uh, see if I was the first one there. But let me, what about you, Jason, what do you got going on?
Marion has not met in about two months.
Whoa!
No need, things running like clockwork.
Are they?
Yeah.
And Rachel, we talked about broadband.
Yeah, that's pretty much it, yeah.
No recycling?
I, you know, I know.
Yeah, no, no need, and we have, yeah, we're just status quo. And interesting about the Deb Seavey thing, I thought she'd resigned from recycling. She just can't get that trash out of her mind.
No.
I think it was the calculating, you know, because, you know, the problem they did, you're part of the state figuring out how much trash you save. I think she, like, that gets her, you know, she.
And do you remember to recycle?
That's why she wants to do five.
I meet a lot of people down there, and it's a, like I say, cool people recycle.
Well, the other thing is that it has made me more anxious to see these things on Facebook and whatever else, where some country like Norway is converting solar panels over their highways or some other way that another country is. Oh, South Korea with the solar panels over the right hand. Is that what it was? Yes, yes. I mean, all kinds of wonderful things that people are thinking about. And you think, why not Lubeck? Why not Lubeck? Absolutely, absolutely, you have more sun than anybody. We, we still have problems dealing with the pulverized glass. I cannot get rid of that fast.
And with that, any public comment?
Look at the crowd.
Yeah, this is.
And nobody's submitting this?
We gotta start taking donations or something, that's a lot of people.
We've got Economic Development Committee representative, Comprehensive Plan Update Committee representative, represented, and the Planning Board representative.
Oh, you forgot the.
And the Parks.
Yes. Good job, town peoples!
It's a very involved town.
We're gonna have to start serving cookies.
Are you sneaking a hand up there in the back?
Rachel, is that a motion?
Yeah.
We have a motion, you just made a cookie?
We have one tentative little sneaking hand up in the back there.
Yeah.
You sure?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So clearly it's the community, but wondering where does Beach Cleanup get into?
It's in September. There's a week, a national week that's designated in September that we get that.
And that's it?
There's about, there's about three of them.
Yeah, okay.
They'll have one down in Boot Cove, actually, they have two in Boot Cove. We're, we're part of all of them. We go in Cove. Then they'll have one down Maury Beach.
Yeah, and anybody can always.
And you can always, if, if, just while you're hiking along and it's something you like to do, you can put it right in this one here in the parking lot. We have a dumpster right here, right outside the office.
Okay. Carry bags with you?
Don't put tires in there, though. That was their job.
Put them aside.
Yeah, like lobster traps. I mean, far side went and kind of someone passed down it, you know.
He's down.
And the, yeah, and the vacuum.
We filled up the bag like, filled up the bag like that in two hours.
Well, first off, and I also say, welcome.
Thank you, good job.
Deny any knowledge of knowing any of this, but thank you for coming and.
No, good news on this, in this regard is that Lee and I cruise up and down Maury Beach all the time and often bring giant pieces of trash off the beach. And the last time we walked there, I was shocked at how little trash was out there. So something, somebody must be catching on to something.
I used to, in my bipedal days, walk on Raccoon Beach in Campabello. Every morning, I'm like, about six-thirty. And I always picked up, I mean, a big garbage can full of beer cans. I mean, it was amazing to me.
Stop drinking beer.
We started off there, down in Boot Cove, we would take about eighteen yards out of there. The last two years, probably three yards.
Well, that's good.
That's the road and the beaches.
There's still problems areas like, like Maury Beach parking lot and the, and the Salt Pond parking lot. There's always like a whole case of twisted tea or something. It would be nice if, if somebody could catch the people who are doing that, because they're doing it right there. And they're, I mean, it takes a long time to drink a twelve-pack of twisted tea, but somebody.
Depends who you are.
Well, yeah, but somebody's there long enough to drink a whole twelve-pack and leave all the garbage and their, and their takeout container for days, you know, because I know where they're, I know where they're getting their food from and it's, they're sitting there long enough that somebody should catch them.
Yeah. Well, I know, I've lived in eighty-five, man, for how long? And every morning, there's a pizza box or a paper plate, or there's a pop can, or there's something, you know. So it's, you know, they come out of IGA, or there used to be Uncle Pippies down there. And they, there is not a mentality to throw it away. Or if they don't throw it away right, the wind around here, because I know when we walk the dog in the morning on Water Street, I don't think people throw something there, throw out a garbage can, you know. Well, there, with the winds in this town, it's, you could do frisbee with the trash can.
Well, a lot of people just pull over.
Another, another related point really quick. Jay, Jason, can you provide a dumpster for me when I do the project over, over here? Thank you.
So we're gonna be lean, mean.
Bandstand fixing machine?
Bandstand music, Blair, and beer drinking.
And connected.
And connected.
We got done with mine.
So needless to say, any cleanup you ever do, there's always a place to put it. And I know one time, I think it was Bayley's, I don't know if it was yours, or we went out with a tractor and I think we pulled over thirty traps out of the sand.
Wow.
It just, and that was through a long period of time, and that was quite a project.
If you ever get anything, just call the boss. She can tell you where a closest dumpster is. That'd be Susan.
All right, are we good?
We're good.
All right, well.
I think we adjourn.
Thank you. Second?
A second, yes.